Call order. Discussion of possible action on 2021 City Bridge Safety Inspection Report, Lee Roy.
I'll go ahead and start the presentation, but before that, every time I get a hat like this and wear it, somebody wants one.
I want one.
And so we had the individual that makes them quit making them, so we ordered some.
Awesome.
And we thought we would provide one to each councilor.
That's awesome. Wow, look at that. Fully adjustable. Nice, don't let you don't get one.
There you go.
Nice.
Steve's not here.
Steve doesn't get one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lee Roy. That was generous.
Thank you, Steve.
So kind of a recap, we've already talked about on May 4, some of the projects that we would like to get federal assistance on, and we started out talking about earmarking, which Congress is doing again this year. The Congress has done most of their earmarking. We've not received anything yet, but the Senate is still in the process. One thing I did add since we go talk about the bridges tonight, Sooner Road and 19th Street. There's two bridges that affect Sooner Road. Bridge G8 that will go into, when we get to the bridge report on Sooner, $3 million to replace it, and then a 1960 bridge, 127th on Seward, just right after you get off of Sooner Road on Seward, 3.1. So if you're going to do Sooner full depth replacement, you might as well do the two bridges. So you're looking at about $12 million to do those two roads and the two bridges. And there's not a bridge on 19th Street. So I just added that footnote, go in more detail on it. And then on May 11, of course, we had the orientation. May 18, we talked about our economic development applications that we would look at for funding through the Economic Development Administration. Priority one was our industrial park. And priority two was state certified film soundstage to enhance or complement the First Capital Film Crew Institute that we are working with Meridian to start at Meridian Tech and Guthrie. Then on June 1, we talked about garbage service rates versus what it cost us from waste connections. We talked about the convenience center, and then we talked about the youth sports complex. Tonight, we're going to talk about the bridge report. Then we'll end the session for Public Works Authority and open the session on general government, and we'll talk about water tires, booster stations, raw water sources, Guthrie Lake, Liberty Lake, Cottonwood Creek Pump Station. And we'll throw in Country Club Lake, although it's not part of our water supply, it's recreational. And then at the end, I have some updates on needs for improvements to our solids or our waste sewer collection lines. Then on July 6, our next meeting, we're going to talk about the new state statute, the Public Safety Protection District, and future traffic controls for high growth corridors and accident prone intersections. On July 20, 20th, we'll talk about the wastewater sewer collection system, which I'm going to cover some of that tonight. And then priority equipment needs by each department. And then on August 3, we'll have the budget workshop. One of the things that staff has targeted to try to do this year is establish a $15 minimum starting wage for full-time employees. We got 34 positions right now that make less than $15 an hour. That plus the retirement in FICA would be 162,000. Of course, if you raise the floor, you go push some of the other salaries up, so there will be some adjustments there as well. But that will be in the budget that staff proposes to you this year. We've talked about if we don't get earmarked money with the President's job and plan and American Families Plan, of course, under the American Rescue Plan, we've already got about 1.9 million that should be coming to us that we plan to use for water main and water valve replacement. We've already identified, we'll use part of it as match for our next CDBG application to replace the water main from the water plant at the Harrison that was built in the 1920s. But if we don't get earmarked money, there will be money that is awarded to many federal agencies. Of course, this is the President's proposal. Congress has theirs, the Senate has theirs, so no telling what the final outcome will be, but there is going to be money for infrastructure improvements. It's pretty much a given. It's just how much it's going to be. They'll have to fight that out. Again, for budgeting purposes, we think that you can't spend all your money on deferred maintenance. You can't spend it all on economic development. We think there needs to be a balance as we look at the budget. And those are kind of the six buckets that we think money should be looked at and fund these areas in some balanced approach as we look at how to use our money going forward to move the whole community forward rather than one sector or another. Now, the 2021 Bridge Safety Inspection Report, and you all do have this in front of you. If you have any problem reading any of it, this is, I took that map and divided it in half. On the top half, G7 is the number of the bridge on College Avenue would be, and Tenny, our Public Works Director, established the priorities of the replacement of our 11th bridge. Of course, when this goes to the street committee, they may modify those priorities. But right now, based on Tenny's input, that would be our first priority. That bridge will cost us about 2.3 million to replace. And we'll go over the rating on that bridge in a minute. G7 is right there, and it's priority number five, 2.8. And then our other three of our top priority, this is a bridge on Sooner, and this is a bridge on Seward, just as you turn off of Sooner and go back towards I-35. G8 on Sooner is about a $3 million bridge. And the one on Seward is about 3.1 million. And then priority number four, by the lake, that one is only about a $580,000 bridge replacement. So you can see on the 11 bridges, AR stands for at risk. One NBI rating above, structurally deficient. And ND is not deficient, non-deficient. And SD stands for structurally deficient. This is the year of the bridges that were built. Expected bridge design life is approximately 75 years. So if you go back, you're looking at around 1950 in that range. And you can see we have several that are getting close to the end of their lifecycle. And of course, there can be other things that make them age or need to be replaced besides just age. The top five, if we did those, you're looking at just under $12 million. And then if you add in the other six to replace them all, you're looking at about $16 million. So, you know, I'm sure that people were very excited back in 2016 when we passed the 3/4 cent sales tax for 15 years, and we're going to get $15 million to fix all the problems of the city.
Yeah, well, here's the bridge issue.
So, I mean, if you look at our water lines, the bridge, roads, we're going to get into sewer lakes, we probably got close to $150 million of projects. With that, I'm ready to stop talking about the bridges and end the Public Works portion meeting and open the general government session. But I will stop and address any questions you might have.
Just curious, on number seven, it says it's structurally deficient. What brings it so far down? Is it just the traffic count, or what, why would we not have that?
Tenny, I want you to address that.
That's the spillway at Liberty Lake, right there?
Yeah, but it says it's structurally deficient.
Well, that's never even been paved, right?
There's actually two bridges there. The old bridge is still underneath the new portion of the bridge, and that's the one that you've heard us talk about recently about trying to get the funding for as far as a grant there at the spillway and stuff. The, or the wing walls coming off of that structure is all washed out, and that plays a big factor into that bridge.
If not, we would end our Public Works Authority session and go to general government.
Call order, the special Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. Discussion of possible action on A, city water tires and booster station, and B, city lakes, raw water resources. Inclusions of but not limited to Cottonwood Creek Pump Station and Country Club Lake, which is Alima Lake, right? Alima, isn't that the name of that country club lake? Don't they call it Alima Lake?
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe, okay.
We always call it Country Club Lake.
Okay, Guthrie Lake and then Liberty Lake, go ahead.
West Side Water Tire located at West Harrison Avenue and South 18th Street is a 250,000 gallon elevated water tire. East Side Water Tire located at East Harrison Avenue and South Cedar, it's a 300,000 gallon elevated water tire. And then the Job Corps Standpipe, it's actually located on the Job Corps Center Campus. It's a 500,000 capacity standpipe. And Langston Standpipe, East College and Highway 33, is a 600,000 gallon standpipe. What we looked at, what is the highest priority relative to our water tires? And the first one is the west side and east side tires. Paint the exterior and paint the interior and miscellaneous structural repairs. Those projects on those two water tires would come to 611,000. And another higher priority is water booster pump stations. Replace the west side booster pump station. That's a $625,000 project. A little less of a priority, a medium priority we ought to look at in the next five years is the Job Corps Water Tire and Standpipe, paint the interior and exterior. That's about a $300,000 project. And then a little further down, a lower priority, but still something, you know, we need to start thinking in 12 months what our goals are and priorities. But we need to also start thinking about five, 10 years, what our priorities are and where we're going. Seven years out, roughly Langston Tire will need to paint the exterior and interior of that tire to maintain the life of that, and that's about a $368,000 project. That's the improvements that we need to look at relative to extending the life of our water tires. On water capacity, we have three sources of raw water. We draw water from Guthrie Lake, Liberty Lake, and the Cottonwood Creek Intake. Combined during normal conditions, 7 million gallons a day can be drawn from those three water sources. Of course, drought, algae blooms, a set or can influence that capacity. The water treatment plant, we can treat 6 million gallons a day. Our 24-inch raw water line to feed the water treatment plant, so we can only get just about 4 million, even though we got 7 million, we get there, we can treat 6 million. We only have the ability to get 4 million from the lakes and Cottonwood Creek into the plant.
Per day?
Per day. And at some point, to increase the capacity of that 24-inch to 6 million, we'll need to put in a booster pump. Right now, we're looking at putting it adjacent to the water treatment plant, and that would allow us to draw more water from those sources and get it to the plant. That's a million dollar project to do that.
And it'd get us to 6 million?
Yes.
Do we have that need for that, what's our need?
Right now, this is from a 2012 study, and it showed if you take Guthrie, Langston, and Cole, by 2030, population is 17,000. We've not quite grown that fast. It shows 2020, 12,700 for Guthrie, but we're at 11,969 according to the census projections. So you can see by 2030, we will be at 4 million if we reach this population. And remember, the raw water line only lets us bring in about 3.9 million. So somewhere in the next 10 years, we're going to have to give some serious thought about putting that booster pump in so that we can get more through that 24-inch line as we continue to grow, and we may even start growing faster. It appears that there's a lot of housing development going on at present time. This is just a map to show where the relation of things, Liberty Lake, Guthrie Lake, and Cottonwood Creek Intake. And that has been a great project for us because a significant amount of our drinking water comes from the creek. But then there is, that's the 24-inch line that comes into our water plant by Mineral Wells Park. This kind of layout of our water supply.
Just below Guthrie Lake is where that comes out of, isn't it?
Pardon?
And that come out just below Guthrie Lake? The pipe?
It
Isn't that where that's?
It would, sorry, hit the wrong button. That 24-inch line goes from Liberty Lake and comes up, and then Guthrie Lake ties into it, and then it comes up to the water plant. And this is the raw water intake, and it ties in right in here.
That's giving us three sources on the same pipeline, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The 24-inch is tied into all three of those. We can draw from all or segregate it and draw from that. Right now, with the issue of at Liberty Lake, correct?
Yes.
We're drawing from Guthrie Lake.
Draw from that.
City Lakes, the Guthrie Lake, our biggest issue there is the West Basin. You can see some of the pictures, and there's more detail in your agenda packet, but exposed rebar, severe freeze stall damage on the wall. Wall curves that will increase during flooding, seepage, rip wrap and undercutting at the toe. Displaced joints in the channel floor. We've talked about this project, looking at an OWRB grant. And we have agreed to do Phase 1, which is the project development, which is about a $150,000 project. And Phase 2, the actual construction, when you add those together, is about 1.8 million. And our share would be, I don't have that in front of me, but our share is 35%?
Yes.
So that's something that right now, all we're doing is Phase 1.
So about 600 grand or something?
Yep, it'd be our share when you do the construction. OWRB, not even sure at this point when they will have the grant money for the construction project. But we're going to have to figure out, right now, we've not budgeted that 600,000 to match that, so we're going to have to figure that out. On Liberty Lake, it's in pretty good shape, so it's more or less just in-house maintenance at this time. The Cottonwood Creek Intake, that's just some history on it. The last thing we had to do to that was after the flood. We got funding to go and replace some of the rip wrap that got washed away. That project's been completed, so there's not any major maintenance there. And Country Club Lake is, of course, the least of the country club. They're responsible for the annual maintenance. If it's a major project, of course, we would do it. But the annual maintenance to keep it up is supposed to be done by the country club. That's kind of the presentation on the water. I'll stop and see if there's any questions before I talk about sewer lines.
So at Country Club Lake, you're doing nothing, is that what you're saying here?
We don't.
We're not responsible for the annual maintenance of that lake. It's part of the lease agreement with the country club. They have to maintain the dam, mow it so trees don't grow on it, those kind of things. Sometimes there are major things like rip wrap, some areas. We do assist with that. So I'm not saying we don't do anything, we do the major things. But the day-to-day and annual maintenance is supposed to be the responsibility.
Do we have any problems up there you're aware of?
In the past, we've had some issues, but I think they pretty much caught up at this point, haven't they?
The worst thing that we've had going on out there is right at the toe of that spillway is eroding extremely bad. We've been putting all the rip wrap that we can get, as well as all concrete, concrete that the contractors generated off of the sidewalk project they took out there as well. So we're getting a pretty good jump on fixing those.
All the dirt work that you did out at Guthrie Lake, is that part of this project too? When you doped it all out last, a couple of years ago, I guess?
No.
Okay, I'll just, all that, I just noticed all that's cleaned up all inside over there.
Just the clearing along that other way?
Yeah. Okay, I'll just add.
Now, sir.
Yes, sir. Sanitary sewer main replacement. These are the sewer lines that have failed, and I got three pages to these, so. But the total, just so it would be big enough to read, the total of these projects to address the ones that have a failed rating is 6.8 million, almost $7 million. And this is in your pack, or no, it's not in your packet. But those are just the details of the projects that add up to that 6.7. It's not three times 6.7, but just giving you the details. Then, in addition to, those are the ones that have failed rating. And we use C-MOM money to do small projects. But it's kind of like, let's see, I'm trying to think of an analogy that is proper to say. It's kind of like pouring water out of a teacup on a house fire. And some of our C-MOM money, we have obligated towards paying off our $20 million wastewater treatment plant. So the funding to do these is not there. But then, those are the ones that fail rating, the poor rating. I didn't list all those. This would be on top. In addition to that 6 million, another $19 million we could spend on sewer lines that are, have a poor rating. So priority would be the 7 million, and then over time, we need to do the 18 million. These are the kind of things that keep a city manager up at night, all these projects, because we probably got 125, 150 million dollars worth of projects we could do to catch up in our community. But to add all these, we haven't even talked about all the road projects. We just really talked about two major ones. So we've got to start thinking long-term, of course. I'm hoping that we will get some money under the federal infrastructure bills that will be passed that the President Biden and the Senate, Congress are looking at. But if not, we're going to have to start talking about rate structure to fund some of these projects and figure out a 10-year plan, maybe where we can start knocking some of these out. So hopefully, it's a retreat, we can talk about 12-month goals, but then also talk about five-year, 10-year plan so that we can start looking at putting together a more long-term plan to get Guthrie where we need to catch up on some of our deferred maintenance on our infrastructure.
On the, you said at the beginning of this, of course, we don't know anything yet, Biden's plan included so much money for different infrastructure projects.
Yeah.
You didn't know where that was going to go yet, but that was the initial. I was wanting to back up and see what those figures were.
115 billion for bridges, highways, and roads.
It's a lot to take 100 of that.
Yeah. 20 billion for road safety, 80 billion for M-Track. And it appears that now it will probably be the most likely opportunity if we're ever going to get M-Track passenger service reinstituted from Oklahoma City north to Newton, Kansas. Seems to be pretty favorable at this time. 111 billion for safe drinking water and upgrade and modernize wastewater and stormwater systems. 100 billion for workforce development. 31 billion for national network of small business incubators and so forth, so, you know.
So 111 billion for wastewater?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, that'll be all grants when it comes through.
Well, honestly, that was what
Nobody knows for sure on the, whether they will be grants or combination loan and grants. I mean, until they actually do the appropriation bills, we hope that there is a significant amount of grants.
Yeah.
One thing that I've asked our congressional delegation, there's so many federal agencies that do not fund communities over 10,000 in population. And I said, please make sure you look at that when you do those appropriation bills, that that money's not going to agencies that limit grants to cities under 10,000 population, because that won't do us any good.
No.
And so I specifically asked them, one day, a couple of years ago, went to a grant writing, training from OML, spent all day. There was only one grant available to There was only one grant available to a town over 10,000 in population that day. So we need to make sure they put that money in pockets where we have access to. And hopefully, there will be substantial grants. You know, whether it's 115 billion, or 80 billion, or 90 billion, who knows yet? Because I'm sure there will be a lot of negotiations and jockeying back and forth.
It won't matter how much it is that they prioritize at the toll of Oklahoma City.
And we run into that, something that, of course, you know, I think of things while I'm trying to watch TV. But if you look at ACOG and trying to get money through them for bridge replacements like we did on Harrison Street. And their funding formula is geared towards larger communities. We have tried to send them a wake up call that we're not going to continue to pay dues in long if they don't address something where smaller communities get help. If you look at the state of Oklahoma, I believe they provided significant more revenue to counties for road and bridges this year out of the budget. They didn't give anything to cities. So I'm going to try to put together a report showing how much taxes is paid from Guthrie that goes to the state, how much comes back to Guthrie? If you look at property taxes and sales tax paid by Guthrie residents and Guthrie businesses to the county, how much of that comes back to the city? You know, maybe it's time for some of those tax dollars to come back home.
Yeah, that would be nice.
You have any other up bids for it?
That's it.
Then we are adjourned.